Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council's special meeting and regular workshop. The council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal actions on specific items and during the workshops, only discusses issues with no formal actions taken. Washington State per federal guidelines have lifted the requirements for face coverings.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay, we're good. So Washington State per the federal guidelines has lifted the requirements for face coverings for vaccinated individuals in most situations. Therefore, council members, staff, and the public who are vaccinated may attend this meeting without a face covering. Those individuals who have not been vaccinated will need to continue wearing a facial mask in the meetings until the order has been lifted by the state of Washington. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda. The city council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland and is streamlined on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. So with housekeeping out of the way, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milney. Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Barajas.
Present.
And Martinez.
Present. May we all rise for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. And next, we'll go to hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. So we have a public hearing for resolution adopting the 2002-2027 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. Mr. Director Rick White, would you like to kick us off with that, please?
I will, Mr. Mayor, but very briefly, I'll just turn it directly over to Mr. Ford, who presented this item at the last council workshop and he'll finish the presentation tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Oh, great. John's got it. So normally, on the opening of the hearing and the closing of the hearing, I wouldn't normally create another presentation, but I did so just to try to provide a little bit more clarity on the number of projects that have changed since I last came before you a couple of weeks ago. And those projects were added and or modified either based upon your comments and our discussion during our council meeting that night or conversations with staff and anticipated UGA expansion and other improvements that we anticipate with development. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, developments happening faster almost than we can keep up with it. So a lot of these have been added with that in mind. So again, trying to highlight or bring to your attention, I guess, the projects that you see in your agenda packet. We've tried to go through on this particular graphic and highlight those that have either been added or modified. And I'll go through each one of the added or modified ones. Next with you.
Mr. Ford?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have you hold just for a second.
Sure.
I believe I need to open a hearing. Is that correct? Did we, or is it continuing? It is already open?
It is, it's not, Mr. Mayor, but after Mr. Ford is finished with his presentation, that would be appropriate.
We can open it after that. Yeah, not a problem. Make sure I get this mouse correct. So after my last presentation, one of the, the only project that I did modify is Road 68 interchange analysis. So I modified that a bit to, we originally had a bike ped consideration. Councilmember Maloney, you remember that discussion? And so what I wanted to do is at least get a consideration for an analysis a little bit more expansive and also take a look at the traffic. We talked a little bit about that in the meeting and I wanted to make sure that this effort included those steps to be able to move forward. The additional projects that I mentioned that I added, Burns Road Extension, Road 68 to Rio Grande. Currently, that would be Road 68 to the east. Road 68 and Burns Road intersection, again, that same location with the possibility of installing a traffic signal. Shoreline Road realignment. This is one in which we believe that at some point with development going on in the Broadmoor area, that road may be realigned to better provide access not only to those properties, but some of the internal properties that are along in that area as well. Lewis Street and Heritage Road intersection. And then the A Street and Heritage Road intersection, both of those are traffic signals. Again, pretty busy truck corridors. We're seeing a lot of development out in that area, along A especially. And then taking into consideration also the increased emphasis out there on that truck route, especially with WashDOT's recent moves of eliminating that left turn from A onto SR 12. We anticipate that some intersection improvements out there will be necessary in the future. Lewis Street corridor improvements phase two. So the first phase of Lewis Street associated with not only the overpass, but also Peanuts improvements, this will continue those improvements and be a phase two for the downtown. South Fourth Avenue or Festival Street improvements. The intent there is to kind of, again, work with the Peanuts Park area, possibly turning that portion into more of a Festival Street consideration. Make sure that we got that on here as well. And then the last one is the Road 52 extension. And again, considering the new UGA area and the expansion and a lot of the development that's been talked about north of town, this is a project that I worked with the fire chief on to try to take advantage of some of the county fire stations up in that area that they could help provide service if there was another connection. And Road 52 seemed to be a logical point for that connection. So I think you'll, you'll see those in addition. We've got, now got 56 projects. So again, huge number of projects to consider for this year, but happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. So does the council have any questions of staff before I open this public meeting? Yeah, we'll start with Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ford, just a quick question on the Lewis Street Phase Two. How far does that go down to you? Does that go all the way down to 10th?
Yeah, I believe I've got a listing. Currently, sorry.
There's a lot of red along there. There's a lot of intersecting projects right there, so I was just wanting to make sure I understood.
Yeah, we've got quite a number there. I've gotta find it. Phase two, so fifth to 10th. So the first phase was second to fifth. This one will continue that all the way to 10th.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Okay, if there's no one else, then I will open this public hearing for comments from the audience. So I'll open this public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to share anything? I didn't receive anything from anybody online. Is that correct? So this is the first call. And second call for anybody who would like to provide comments. And then a third call. So I'm going to close the public hearing now and I will ask for a motion from council.
Apologize, I went far back too much. I move to approve Resolution Number 4072, adopting the 2022-2027 Six-Year Program for the City of Pasco for the purpose of guiding the development, design, and construction of local and regional transportation improvements.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve Resolution Number 4072. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Mayor, quick and just quick comment. You know, we continuously hear, let's not be Road 68 version two. And looking at this math and the number of dollars that we have projected over the next six years, I think quite frankly, this demonstrates Mr. Ford, Mr. White, and your staff's efforts to avoid a second Road 68. We recognize that 50,000 more people were projected, are projected for the next 20 years. So we are gonna have some congestion regardless, but I appreciate the foresight and the thought here and trying to avoid congestion where possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Councilmember Serrano. Alright, thank you, Mr. Ford. And we'll move right along to the next item on the agenda, which is new business. And we're moving to a resolution, amended and restated interlocal cooperative agreement with the Tri-City Home Consortium. Director Rick White, would you like to kick us off on that one, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm sure Council knows by now that the three tri-cities formed a consortium some couple of decades ago now and to take advantage of home block grant funds that otherwise wouldn't have been available to each individual city. The original interlocal agreement was significantly amended and revised and approved by all three cities in 2013. And then in 2015 and in 2017, there were amendments to the interlocal agreement. One that restricted activities and the second that put those activities back in. It was a temporary fix to make sure Richland could spend their money here locally as opposed to returning it to HUD. However, the renewal, which automatically extends the consortium interlocal agreement through 2022, requires formal council action by all three cities to incorporate those two amendments into the interlocal agreement. So we're making sure to cross the Ts, dot the Is, make sure that everything receives HUD approval and wouldn't see this actually changing much. I did want to add that tenant-based rental assistance was added this year as an additional tool. The down payment assistance program was receiving actually the bulk of the funding up until about three years ago. That slowed considerably and the tenant-based rental assistance is a way to make sure those funds are spent here locally.
Thank you, Director White. And with that, we have a comment from the council. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, do we have any, I know that there's regulations and ways that we have to approach this. What I've seen in many cities, especially ones that I've lived in, is a lot of these programs are pretty moot. There's no real way to allow folks to use these programs because of, you know, the income required abilities and then the entry-level housing. There's just a huge disparity. And I'm wondering if there's anything that we as a region or as a consortium are doing to try to adjust those numbers or try to make sure that, you know, it's not just a program that exists to exist, but it actually is serving people and continuing to, you know, I know many people who've used this program. And so, you know, I'd hate for this program to become less and less relevant for our citizens.
Certainly. Actually, the down payment assistance program has been changed by council, I think, twice now. Originally, it started out as a $5,000 cap. It went to $10,000. And originally, the $5,000 cap had to be repaid if the home sold or, well, for any reason, if the home sold or if the original applicant and owner no longer lived there. So now the cap is $10,000. It's forgiven after six years as long as the owner remains in place. And the tenant-based rental assistance program is a little too new to tell, but it actually follows HUD guidelines and varies. And believe it or not, for a HUD program, it actually provides some flexibility. You can choose the rental home of your desire and then your income and the amount of subsidy is related to those two, those two levels. How much it costs and what your income level is.
Thank you for that. I'd love to perhaps in the future see kind of how those are doing and if one's taking over the other. And, you know, I'm a big proponent of folks being able to own their home rather than rent a home. And so we, a lot of folks had that opportunity and it's becoming less and less of an option. And so these programs do really make a difference and I'd love to see them continue to have the impact that they have in the past.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Anyone else? Well, if there's no further questions, Director White, thank you very much. I know you've been working on this for years, you're a first in this area and appreciate the time and the work you put into this as well. So if there's no further questions by council, would you like to entertain a motion, Mayor Protem?
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 4073, approving the amended and restated interlocal cooperative agreement with the Tri-Cities Home Consortium under the National Affordable Housing Act to add a tenant-based rental assistance, TBRA, program and incorporate previously approved amendments and further authorize the city manager to execute the revised agreement.
Wonderful, thank you. Then there's a motion to approve Resolution Number 4073. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry. So there's been a motion and there've been a second from Councilmember Roach. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we'll move to an ordinance, budget adjustment, and resolution bid award for Argent Road Phase One project. Director Steve Worley, how do you do tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're gonna be looking at the item to award the bid for the Argent Road Phase One project. As council may recall, this is a project that will improve Argent Road right in front of the new hotel that was built from 20th Avenue over to Saraceno, which is the first intersection to the west. There are two other phases that will be subsequent to this, but this is the first one. We did put the project out to bid and we received one bidder. And we reviewed the bid and though the bid was higher than what we anticipated, everything within the bid looked fine. And so we are bringing this to council to go ahead with the award of the bid. And part of the thinking behind moving forward with the bid is that there is a lot of uncertainty out there right now relative to the construction industry and the prices of materials, the supply chain issues, and all kinds of other things. And so what we don't know is that whether or not we'll get any better price if we delay the project and rebid it because there's just enough uncertainty out there right now that we think it might be better to go ahead and proceed with the award of this bid and continue, get this part done, and continue with Phases Two and Three in the future as well. And so this project is paid for through funding that is coming from both CBC and the Port of Pasco. And so it is fully covered by those grant monies that are awarded by those two agencies. Even with this project and the increase, there will be some of that funding left over and available for the Phase Two project, which is a good thing. But because the bid was higher than what we had anticipated, there is a budget amendment that is necessary. And so that's the second part of this action tonight is to authorize a budget amendment for the increased cost of the project as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Worley, and surely understand the climate for the construction work out there. Councilmember Alvarado, do you have any comment? Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. Mr. Worley and Mr. Zabel and I exchanged a number of emails because I have had some significant concerns about seeing such a large price increase over this. And I maintain some of my concerns and I have asked just for full disclosure to, given that the irrigation system is turned into a six-figure item, whether or not revisiting zero escaping would be a prudent idea both for this project and other projects. So that was something that I did bring up as part of staff, potentially one of those cost-saving measures that we can, we can look at to try to bring this back down into a better range. I know that may or may not be plausible in this project, but certainly I just drove along where this project will be going and right in front of that, the auction house, the mustard auction house or whatever right there, I think they're using a very similar approach where it's relatively few plants, some good-looking rock, and then trees. So very, very minimal landscaping that might be something that we could be both congruent with and still, you know, you know, keep the price tag maybe a little more reasonable on something that we're seeing over there. So anyways, I'm still a bit concerned about this and if we start seeing a trend of significantly increased projects, I'd very much like to see how that would, how that starts to look at affecting our whole portfolio of projects. Twenty-seven percent increase in all of our road projects would be pretty difficult for us to handle, I think. So anyways, I plan on supporting this, but I think we need to watch very closely at how this is trending.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, and I can appreciate those comments. I know, I know that's something that we need to be thinking about more and more to go into zero escaping. Personally, on this particular project, I think we're a little late and I don't know how we can blend it in with what we have currently. But it's definitely something that would be interesting in the future as well and I would like to, you know, if there was a place we could start, I mean, you gotta start somewhere, right? But anyway, appreciate your comments and, and yeah, we're just gonna see, things are just gonna get, just seem to be increasing all the time and I don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but definitely a way to save money in the future. So with that, any other questions or comments from council? If not?
Well, I would just ask, is it too late, I mean, to consider those types of changes? I mean, we'd have to rebid it and all, I mean, where would that take us in the process?
There's a couple ways to do it. We could take a look at what the landscape requirements are on this project and if it's council's desire, we could certainly have a landscape architect look at what changes we could make to this project and then pursue a change order with the contractor and we could try to go that route. That's one option. It would take some time to get that pulled together and then negotiate a change order with the contractor. So.
Does that at all impact our commitment with other agencies that are funding this? I mean, is there any, are there specifications that would require grass or some other type of landscape that would then void what we're receiving?
There are no requirements, but I believe that part of the grant money that we received indicates that we wanted a very nice-looking Argent Road project that's going to enhance both the Port and the CBC properties. And so while it's not tied together, you know, I'm sure that they wanted to see something that looked very, very nice. And to address the issue before about some of the work that some of the other developments have done in the past, there was some coordination between those developments and the road project because they knew that the road project was being designed. And we didn't quite know what was gonna be required as part of the road project. So we allowed some minimal improvements along Argent so that we weren't tearing out something that developers were putting in. So we asked the developer to put in something minimal and then we would deal with it as part of the road project.
Thank you for that clarification. I mean, I appreciate Councilman Maloney's attention to the detail there. I mean, it sounds like we might be fighting an uphill battle to save, I mean, it is $100,000 minus whatever it would still cost around some limited irrigation line for zero escaping. And to your point earlier, I don't know that spending the time negotiating a change order in this climate makes sense. We might lose any benefit. So, you know, I'd hate to cut our nose off to spider face in that sense. So, I mean, I too would like to move forward with this, but also certainly to both of your points, considering it moving forward on where we can have cost savings. Not saying everything needs to be zero escape, but where it's gonna be a significant cost, you know, certainly consider it. And where it also, to your point, Mr. Worley, where it fits with the remainder of a project or whatever, let's consider that.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. So with that, would you like to entertain a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance Number 4540, amending the 2021-2022 biannual budget of the City of Pasco, Washington by providing supplement thereto to provide additional appropriation to the city's general construction fund for the construction of the Argent Road Improvement Phase One.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas, and this is the first motion of two. And the motion's been made to adopt ordinance Number 4540. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes unanimously. Next motion, please.
Second motion, I move to approve Resolution Number 4074, awarding the Argent Road Phase One project identified as bid number 12001 to Colbert Construction Incorporated of Pasco, Washington in the amount of $1,995,937, including Washington State sales tax and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents and allowing all necessary budget adjustments.
Thank you. So there's a motion to approve Resolution Number 4074. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. So all those in favor of the motion to approve Resolution Number 4074, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? And passes unanimously. Thank you. And so that ends the item agenda for the special meeting. And I will now adjourn this meeting. And we can move over to the city council workshop meeting. So we have already went through the housekeeping and had a pledge of allegiance. So we'll move right on to item number four on the agenda of the special meeting and that's verbal reports from council members. Anybody have anything they'd like to report? Alright, if not, we'll just move right along for items for discussion tonight. We have a train safety presentation. Evan Enright of the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission. Director Steve Worley, would you like to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you again. Given the fact that it's so hot outside and you all wanna be in here where it's air-conditioned, we have a three-hour presentation from the, no, I'm kidding. We should have Mr. Enright online somewhere to give us a presentation. Council has expressed some interest in getting more information about some of the train safety comments that we are receiving from the public. And so we reached out to the Utility, Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission. And Mr. Enright is an employee there and they do a presentation on train safety to folks who are interested. And so he should be online tonight and able to give us his presentation. Mr. Enright, are you there?
He's not on.
He's not on?
No.
Did we send him a link to the tonight's meeting? We should have. Yes, we did. So he is not on. We might have to reschedule this presentation.
Well, in light of whether he comes on board or not, we'll just move on to the next item on the agenda. And if he comes on board, then we can squeeze him in. How's that?
That sounds great.
Alright, thank you, Director Worley. And so why don't we just move on to the next item and that's Infrastructure Management Systems Presentation.
Good evening again. So this will be the three-hour meeting or the presentation, no. We, as council is aware, we went into a study for our street system within Pasco and we hired a company to evaluate all of the city's streets. And they use very high technology to scan all of our streets and give us information about where Pasco sits relative to what is called the Payment Condition Index or PCI score for each of our streets. And so tonight, our senior engineer, John Pedvoric, is going to present the information that was gathered by IMS and give council an indication of where we sit with our street system. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pedvoric.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Long time no see. Good to see everybody again. So I'm presenting tonight something really exciting for us. For a while, we had a kind of an in-house system we used and a chunk of it was just on tribal knowledge of, of, you know, our folks that do operations are around our streets a lot and so they would have lunchroom conversations of, you know, what should we do next year and there would be some assessments done. And we've managed to thus far keep track of what we need to do just based off of our knowledge of our small city. But as the city grows in size, it reached the point where it was appropriate to get a more sophisticated tool so that there weren't, you know, nooks and crannies and corners that that tribal knowledge was missing just in their commutes to work and driving between projects and such. So I'm here today to talk about that system and how, you know, what assessments were performed and then, and then what that system is. It's pretty exciting for us. Next slide? I hear a keyboard back there. On the arrows? Okay. Okay, great. Sorry about that. So this is our outline. We'll have a brief introduction so you guys get a general sense for what I'm talking about. We'll geek out a little bit about the methods and tools used for this assessment. And then we'll get into the interesting part of the results of the assessment and then how that enables our long-term. And then how that enables our long-term planning and how we move forward to use this more sophisticated tool to plan our projects. So the condition assessment management was performed by IMS. They're specialists in this kind of assessment, and they have. Uh, a lot of sophisticated equipment, and they partner with software companies to to work on actually developing the software packages to do this sort of work. Uh, they looked at three hundred and forty centerline miles, which. I learned there's there's all sorts of different ways, and every city has several different numbers of how many miles of road. Centerline miles is if you're driving down a road and there's a lane on each side, each mile you drive is one centerline mile. There's lane miles, and there's all sorts of different miles, but we have three hundred and forty centerline miles of road, which is quite a bit. Overall, our roads are in good shape. Which indicates that, you know, maintenance to date has been good, they've been well cared for. Um, it was interesting, the big picture. The analysis also indicated that we're nearing a critical time for these roads. Um, where it'll be important that we stay on top of maintenance and address problems as they come up. Uh, and do so, you know, using the methods that are best suited for the the need now as opposed to let problems get out of hand. So I tried to relate some of this back to to vehicles, cause all of us have both positive and negative experiences owning vehicles. So owning a road is a lot like a vehicle in that if you do your preventative maintenance, and you keep good track of what's going on, and you anticipate problems. Um, there will be maintenance costs, but they're they're minimized as much as they can be. Um, so when the check engine light comes on, if you immediately take it to the mechanic, or maybe you're. You're watching your owner's guide and go, oh, thirty thousand miles is coming up, okay, let's get that on the calendar. Um, repairs, you still have to spend money doing maintenance, but it's it's much less impactful. Um, if you don't, listen to the the different warning cues, or if you're not paying attention, um, then you can pass the point where. You know, you have your transmission fluid changed, you need a new transmission, is the analogy for roads. Um, and so when that happens. Uh, what we see is a fairly substantial cost impact where we end up spending roughly eight dollars per dollar of preventative maintenance. To fix a problem once it went too far. Um, and our goal, which we've been successful at so far at the city. Is identifying when we can spend a dollar instead of eight dollars. Because we only have a certain amount of dollars, and that helps us keep ahead of our roads as opposed to letting them um, kind of get away from us. So there's some pretty sophisticated methods and tools available for this, as you would imagine. Uh, there's a software package, and it's a screenshot of our. Our city on the left there from the software used for this analysis. Um, and then the two pictures on the right are of the equipment that IMS used to scan the roads. Uh, they've equipped a van with laser scanners and a whole bunch of computers and such. Um, they drove all of our roads and scanned all of them, um, and pulled that data in, just the raw data of what their lasers saw. And then their software was able to analyze that and determine uh, what it was seeing, what imperfections there were, and what that meant. So in terms of results, uh, you'll hear me talk about PCI, Pavement Comm- Condition Index. Um, I don't wanna get into details of of what those exact numbers are. Um, higher is better, lower is worse. Uh, and just to get a general reference, here's some pictures correlated to those numbers. So when we talk about numbers a little bit later, you can have a picture in your mind of of what does a hundred mean, what does fifty mean, what does ten mean? Um, so we'll cruise through a series of photos going from from best to worst. Um. You don't have to memorize these, there won't be a quiz, but it'll give you a general sense, so when you see a graph, you can know how Pasco's roads are comparing. Um, so here's fair and poor. Uh, ideally for maintenance, we we repair roads about when they're in fair condition. When it's essentially problems that we can fix from the top by doing overlay as opposed to having to. Dig up the asphalt, dig up the gravel, put in new gravel, and put in a new road. Uh, that's just a lot more expensive. And then here's the lower end of the condition scale. So when we looked at this analysis, we did some planning to figure out uh, how we could look at this and still produce results that. That match what we know about our city. Um, you know, a computer's only as good as what you ask it to do, so we took a careful look at. The history of the city and how it was built and when it was built, and how we wanted to analyze those areas. So we ended up breaking the city into three separate zones, based off of uh. Vintage of constructions and methods of construction and the maintenance history. Um, so. We looked at areas where like, for example, Zone One is a new and growing area. Uh, you'll notice that most of the pavement there later in the presentation is in good condition. Um, because they just paved it, so it should be in good condition. We shouldn't be seeing cracking, we shouldn't be seeing a bunch of issues there. Um, Zone Two is is kind of a mix. Uh, there's a bunch of different aged pavements there and a bunch of annexed county roads. So there's a mixture of how it was built in the first place, and a mixture of how it was maintained, and a mixture of ages. So there's a whole bunch of different variables there. Uh, and then Zone Three is historical Pasco, so that was built with. You know, the Pa- city of Pasco standards, but it's fairly old. And so the good news, when we look at this, we don't see a whole lot of red, and we don't see the failed show up. Uh, so overall, this reflects the statement I made earlier that in general, we have good condition roads. Um, it's a little bit hard to see in this, some of the more details, so I actually broke this into slides for each zone. In case somebody wanted, had a particular interest or particular thing they wanted to see. Um, it was interesting, I spoke with Maria a little bit about what we saw here, and off the top of her head, she she knew most of the projects. Uh, that were upcoming, and and most of those were areas that are identified in this analysis is being uh, recommended, so. Uh, we're already well on the path of correcting these areas that this analysis has identified. Here's Zone Two. And the grayed out areas in the middle are the areas that are still the county, so we didn't assess in those roads. And here's Zone Three. So overall, um, nothing too surprising, nothing. Nothing that caught us off guard, but there is some some upcoming maintenance that we'll need to work with. So it was interesting, we looked at the different zones, and what the data said backed up with what we just off back of the napkin were expecting. Uh, Zone One had more newer pavements, so we saw a lot more excellent condition pavements there. Um, the good range had similar between the zones, and then Zone Three. Uh, had more in the fair range, uh, Zone Two had some in the poor range, so. Reflective of what we would guess that that some of the areas that had older roads had slipped further down on that curve, and will need some attention in the coming years. So what does this give us? You know, we have the software package, we have a whole bunch of data. Um, what this can produce for us is an automated automated prioritization of repairs. So, you know, you you set up a whole whole bunch of parameters and you push run, and it actually kicks out lists of recommended projects which. Minimize our maintenance expenditures over the years to come. So if we were to just go based off of the data, what would we do? Now. Uh, engineers will always be required, because you can't always take what a computer does and just implement it blindly. So there will be the filter of of context of what we know about development work and industrial activity and things like that. Uh, but this will definitely be a good tool for us to to have essentially eyes and ears on every square inch of our of our city's roads and see. What we need to be doing when to be most efficient with our our pavement preservation funds. So in terms of long-term planning, uh, the roads were scanned, this database was created, and now it's it's living in the software tool. And we're working now to coordinate with operations so that as we do repairs, that those. Roads within the software package are updated to show their their newly repaired condition, so that those projects don't come up again next year as as proposed projects. Um, and then the model was based off of. Uh, there are similar cities, you know, on this side of the mountains. It wasn't based off of Pasco, cause we haven't had our roads. Uh, looked at in this way before, so the recommendation was that in two years, we rescan. Um, and that will give the software a much better idea of of what how fast our our pavements deteriorate. And we'll be be able to actually calibrate the model so we can say, you know, not just based off of regional average values, but for Pasco. How are each of these zones performing over a couple years, and that lets us get a really careful um. calculation on what our maintenance requirements will be in the upcoming years, so we can budget. For the next several years in terms of knowing how much money we need to spend to keep up on our pavements, uh, which is a really, really great tool for us. Um, the model currently recommends a six million dollar a year annual maintenance budget, which is a lot higher than what we have now. Um, Marie and Steve uh, wouldn't be surprised if Pasco roads fare better than average. Uh, we have weather conditions that are conducive to pavements surviving a long time. There's not a lot of moisture, you know, there's not a whole bunch of industrial activity across the city. Um, and in general, we don't have really extreme kind of freeze thaw activity in the winter, so. We would expect that that number comes down a bit after this second scanning, um, and we can see how we're actually. How roads are performing and and calibrate the model more precisely. Uh, but we'll be keeping an eye on that, and a couple years out, we'll be back to talk about. Uh, what the software is recommending for maintenance budget, so that we can stay. On that curve where we're addressing problems as they come up, instead of letting things get out of control and replacing the transmission instead of changing the fluid on it. So that was the end of the presentation. I don't wanna take any more of your time. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
Well, I appreciate the presentation, uh, very nicely, uh, Councilmember Toronto.
You can finish your thought.
Well, I was just gonna, well, I was gonna ask, you know, as. As the city grows.
Hmm.
Further and in and then maybe even in years to come, how how are we projecting? The donut hole as we do some more annexation, how how does that work in in implementing that into our program here?
So the software package, uh, that we have currently set up didn't scan those roads. It was kind of the, and we went back and forth, you know, do we, do we anticipate that at some point we'll have those to maintain? Do we start? Keeping an eye on them and spending money to check up on them, or do we deal with it when we get them? Um. We anticipate that they will be similar to the other roads that we've annexed, so in terms of the. The different calibration factors and maintenance costs per year. Because we broke it down into zones, we can look at each zone it by itself and see what how that zone is performing and what it needs. So it'd be a fairly quick back of the napkin thing to say, oh, if we're adding twenty percent more Zone Two roads, what does that look like? Um, it wouldn't be as precise as if we had already scanned all of the county roads, but um, I think we're all positioned to have a. A general idea of what the expectations would be.
And I would just bring that up, cause I I actually go through there quite a bit in my day-to-day routines and uh. Notice some of the roads there are gonna need a lot of work.
Yeah.
I just wondered how we implemented that, and as time comes, and I'm just trying to think of the future, but.
Yeah.
Councilmember Toronto.
Oh, thank you for that. Um, backing up to the last slide, uh, you mentioned that we are. Well under that six million dollar per year maintenance. What is our number, do you know?
Currently, we're at about a million dollars.
Okay.
Um, and there's options in terms of how we pursue funding. One of the reasons we did this analysis, Steve Worley. Has seen it before and seen it successfully used in pursuit of of funds. Um, cause if you could provide a very good basis for how much money you need, it's easier to get funding, so. Uh, we can leverage our investment in this analysis to pursue uh, funds outside the city's current funds. Um, and that would help ease the burden a little bit. Uh, currently, like I said, we're about a million, but um. We've had an eye on different applications, and we're we're hopeful they'll bring some in, but it's always a little bit hard to to budget for um, grant awards.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then that one other question is, when we do start to. Uh, in two years, we'll have done some maintenance. Is that gonna skew the model at all, or?
No, um, so the way the model works, we can actually go in and say, oh, and then in in twenty twenty one, we overlaid Court Street from here to here. And then it knows that when that happened, and then it it resets, and then when it goes out, it expects that. That it will see something that was overlaid in twenty twenty one, and then aged a year into twenty twenty two, so. Um, we'll do the work on our own to keep that model up to date, but we we shouldn't throw a wrench in it by doing maintenance work, no.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and um, thank you to uh, Mr. Worley. I I remember uh. Yeah, I invited uh, him to do a presentation for Good Roads on on this uh, on our preservation, and this was a a lot of oohs and ahs when uh. We were presenting this concept that, you know, that we were we were thinking about uh, doing something like this, and so it really seemed to everyone. From the other jurisdictions, like this was something from the future. So, thank you for that. Um, I I I do appreciate seeing this. My question is, uh. How granular is the um, level of data that we get? If there's a perfect road with one huge pothole, does that affect the whole road, or?
It's it's broken down automatically, so um, you have to rely on the software a little bit, but it's. It's very short segments. Most of them are just a block or two, so essentially as they drive along, uh, the software watches for change in conditions and that. It stops its its current run and it starts a new one, so some of them are longer, some are shorter. If conditions are the same, it might look a little bit longer just to make the analysis less burdensome on the software package, but. Um, it's it's pretty granular, we can dive in pretty well, and there's also a huge database of photos, all the photos that were used for this analysis. Um, as they went to long scanning, also we're taking photos every, it's like a fairly short distance, I want to say ten or twenty feet or something. So we can actually pull those all up and see, you know, why was it that this two-block region has a problem without having to, you know, go jump in the truck and drive there and and go look at it, so. Um, if something looks funny, we can always take a look at it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily just put a project out. Based off of that software, you know, it's a small town, we'll we'll drive around and we'll go see what's going on, but but it helps us start to see trends for sure.
Yeah, cause that was be would be my follow-up question, if we did any kind of auditing to see how.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the the package actually is uh, delivering on what what it actually is.
It was interesting, like I mentioned, when we first got the results, I sat down with Maria, and most of the areas that showed distress in the software package. Were already projects on our maintenance list. Um, so it was really reassuring to see that. That, well, first of all, that we our current system had the the tribal knowledge and and, you know, intuitive understanding of our city to identify a lot of the problems already. Uh, but also was was reassuring that the software package was saying the same things that our our folks were saying as they were driving around in the city.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate see seeing in such a plain red, uh, and green and and yellow. Um, you know, folks who have concerns about equity and things of that nature are able to see from year to year. Um, you know, our our progress and seeing if uh, you know, there's areas that are neglected, or if if that's just a narrative that's. Uh, perhaps uh, not true based on the the colors. So uh, thank you, thank you so much for the work on this, and I really look forward to s- uh, hope. Hopefully this be a good return on our investment and um, in in the long run.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado, Councilmember Maloney, you're there.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Martinez, and thank you so much for the presentation. I'm I am also, uh, really excited about this work, um. The, so I do have a couple questions, um, one, I guess, would be a suggestion, but um, we'll say it's a suggestion. Um, it perhaps Franklin County, I I don't know if we did approach them as a possible partner in this to. Um, but they might have been willing to pay an incremental funding cost to be able to go and and map those roads to uh, Mayor Martinez's point of. We're we're gonna get those at some point, and and if we can space, if if. We can get Franklin County maybe spend just a little bit of money to get those mapped out, that could that could ultimately really help us. But then tagging on to uh, what Mr. Alvarado said was, um. Is there any way we can potentially do a regional approach on this and see some economies of scale? If the other cities are interested in this sort of investment, and they're seeing that this could be a benefit, and we can show them that here is how it works. Then perhaps we can see the cost reduced for everyone in the tri-cities by taking a regional approach and getting local impact, but. Regional cost sharing, uh, just just a thought, um, sometimes the bureaucracy of that can be. More expensive than the benefit, but um, worth maybe at least pursuing. Um, and the other question was, well, it's more of a, we'll say a technical one, so. It looked like especially in Zone One, which was of course in very good shape for the most part.
Hmm.
Um, the areas where there was some, um, you know, poorer conditions look like they're areas that are. Um, often it's more stops or are much higher traffic areas, not not exclusively, but in in large part. Um, that makes sense, right, to me, uh, so I I'm I don't have any questions about whether that's, uh, but i- am I seeing that accurately? Is that, is that?
Yeah, we generally what we saw is is, you know, a lot of those roads are made in a similar timeframe, so the one, and made with a similar detail. So a lot of it is is very similar in terms of how it was constructed, so really it's. The environmental factors, which will be the same, will help, will deteriorate some, and then the usage will deteriorate it, so. Roads that are used more, uh, more stop and go, more corners, we'll see more deterioration than. Than a beautifully paved road that, you know, ends in a field for future rec- for future use that that really doesn't see much use, so. Um, it really reflected what we would anticipate, that those roads that are more used will will need more work.
So so what do we do about that? Is it just that we have to maintain our busiest roads more often, or are there different? Um, construction styles that can maybe cost more upfront, but have a a longer lifespan? I I don't, I don't really understand what what the potential options are, but.
Yeah, so we we have some specific details for different kinds of roads already, because, yeah, you wouldn't pave an alley the same way you would pave, you know, a five-lane road. Um, and so those were, those are calibrated to to balance the construction cost and the maintenance cost, so. We will have to maintain uh, our more busy roads more, but in general, they are constructed to a higher standard, if you would. Um, so it's it's a balancing act. You could make it to where you would, you wouldn't have to come back for two hundred years, but we'd never be able to afford a mile of road, so it's that balancing act.
Yeah, thank you. I I, I just, I'm looking at Road sixty-eight and thinking about the amount of traffic we get along with that particular um. Section, and thinking about how impactful it is to shut down one lane or multiple lanes as we repair that is is a big deal, so I just wanted to understand that better, so thank you.
And I think when we look at projects, you know, we can look at, do we do, you know, when we're doing some pavement work, what what solution would we use? And that's where the the engineering comes in, as opposed to just pushing a button on the software, and also seeing the deterioration over time will help, because we'll be able to see. Uh, from year to year, how fast things are deteriorating. Seeing deterioration over time will help because we'll be able to see uh from year to year how fast things are deteriorating, so we can go, do we really want to be back here in ten years? No, what would it take to be back in twenty years? Well, it costs this much more, is that worth it? So this tool will actually help us be able to navigate that decision a little better.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember uh Maloney. Councilwoman Roach.
Just to follow up with what you just mentioned, so how in the past have we done it? Do we have a? A range of institutional knowledge of, okay, a major arterial lasts X amount of years?
Um I think it's it's a combination of that and then um it being a relatively small city, so. You know, between the the maintenance crews, uh living in the city, driving around the city. And knowing, okay, you know, I did this road last year, this year rode the year before. This other piece was made at the same time. I haven't touched it yet. I should probably go check that. Um there was also some some assessment work where. Someone went through, I think it was about a summer of driving all of our roads and logging their their observations in an Excel database. Um. But it was all manually done just by a person driving. Um so there's been some effort to to have a holistic inspection and then. I think the most of the projects are based off of the, I would call it tribal knowledge of the. The pavement maintenance crew and then the capital projects group staff. Um and historically, as we've seen that we've we've been doing relatively good in terms of. Knowing where the the biggest potholes were, the the jarred or coffee every morning, but uh this will help us really fine tune that model, so maybe there's something that's. Deteriorating quickly that, you know, maybe it's not horrible this year, but next year it'll be really bad, so we need to catch that. More quickly as opposed to something that's not is deteriorating as fast, so.
So beyond um the pavement itself, does this tool assess striping and lane visi- uh visibility?
Um not to my knowledge. To my knowledge, it was looking at the pavement structure itself.
Okay.
Um so the the assessment and the planning of of striping activities usually, you know, when we do an overlay. It's just black asphalt and then we have to come back and stripe, so obviously that's. That will be done with overlay projects and repair projects, but in terms of just striping maintenance, that would be something that would need to be resolved. Uh just with the maintenance crew like they are now.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I do have a question kind of on your striping issue. Whenever there is streets that. Are the are still in good shape but need striping, but maybe this is a question for Director Worley. Is this a matter of reporting it to your department and? And getting evaluated?
Yes, that'd be that'd be great. Let us know. Uh we have an annual striping program. To make sure that all of our stripes are in good shape, and if you see areas that need more attention, please let us know. We just recently went through a process with a consultant of evaluating all of our streets, establishing criteria for which streets. Based on the classification, the type of use and the volume of traffic. Which ones should be striped, which ones uh don't need to be, and which ones are missing some striping? And so we've identified some that we need to go and address this year, and so we plan to do that. But yes, anybody has any concerns about any of the striping? Let us know.
Perfect. And one of the avenues that we can do that uh through is our Ask Pasco uh app, correct?
Absolutely.
Awesome. So everybody listening, I'll hopefully get that information. Thank you for that, uh Councilmember Roach. Thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Worley. And then next we'll move on to. Our park and recreation master plan kickoff. Uh Director Zach Radkai, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me uh catch up our slideshow here. Yes, uh good evening, uh Mr. Mayor, members of council, Zach Radkai, ACS director. And recently, the city's contracted with MIG consultants to conduct a. Complete revamp and overhaul of the city's parks, rec and open space or pros master plan. Really, the goals of this is to create an actionable plan in line with the city's projected growth. Um it's newly comprehensive uh land use plan and to better project upcoming capital projects. In addition, staff and uh one of the goals here is to identify community needs, gaps and priorities among emerging trends in parks and recreation. And then also to stay in compliance with state requirements and remain eligible for RCO grant funding. The intentions of this plan is that it would be a ground up comprehensive plan built to meet new and modern trends, future growth and changing demographics of the city of Pasco. And it's also to meet our idealistic yet very attainable vision that we would have the best public spaces in the tri cities and Pasco would be known for that. Our goal with this plan, as you will see tonight, is that we'll have a robust uh and collaborative, community involved project throughout. Uh which is why we're having this introductory workshop this evening. Um with that, I would like to introduce Cindy Mendoza from MIG to introduce the team process, our predicted outcomes. And to engage the council in some initial discussions. Cindy, are you there?
I am. Thank you, Zach. Can you hear me alright?
Yes, you are coming in loud and clear.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. I appreciate that introduction. I also appreciate the opportunity to meet with you all virtually here tonight. To be able to introduce to you the planning process to update the parks, recreation and open space plan. As Zach mentioned, I'm here to give you a quick introduction to the planning process. And then I have a few discussion questions uh for you all to make sure that we are starting this project on the right foot. Next slide. With our project team that we are bringing here today, I am representing expertise in a variety of different areas. We have a a well-rounded team that brings to you uh specialty in community engagement. Visioning and strategic planning, needs assessments and identifying the right level of service. But even beyond that, uh MIG does uh from planning through design and even into construction. And the reason that's important is because that allows us to give you realistic estimates on what it takes to. Enhance and grow your park and recreation system and to make improvements. And then beyond that, we also uh bring expertise in strategic communications. Meaning we're creating a document for you that really communicates not only to staff, but also out to residents across your community. And to city leaders, what's needed moving forward. Next slide. As we move forward in the planning process, one of the things that we want to make sure we do is pay attention to the outcomes we hope to achieve. In other words, it's not really about just creating a plan, a document with lots of pages. We really want to make sure that we are helping you get the background information and data you need for good decision making moving forward. That means that we'll leave you with an updated inventory and information about the existing assets in your system. An understanding of community priorities as well as needs. An understanding of their visions, their hopes, their goals for the future and how those fit and are aligned with city goals. As well as very strategic recommendations and directions, including an action plan and implementation strategy for the future. And that's important because it feeds in then to your annual work plan and budgeting that you do to know how to enhance the park system. Next slide. Besides focusing on those key outcomes, we also focus on the challenges. That this parks, recreation and open space plan should address. Recognizing that all good plans need to help the city and staff overcome whatever challenges they may face in implementing this plan. So we start to look at things such as the fact that you are a very rapidly growing community. And as part of that rapid growth, we need to make sure that you are providing the right level of service. And that uh facilities, whether indoor or outdoor, are accessible to residents to meet current and future needs going forward. And then also looking at the park and recreation economics. We know that with COVID, it has entirely changed the revenues that were collected from programming and facility use fees here over the last year. And also really affected the way that people were using outdoor recreation space. So maintenance demands increase, but revenues decrease, so we want to make sure we're balancing that in terms of the economics as we look at things. And then looking at the way we prioritize funding, financing options. Looking at the fact that the dollars that support capital development are typically different from the funding sources for operations. And as part of that, understanding how we build consensus around project outcomes. And partner support to be able to move forward this plan, so that the city is working in conjunction with others to actually implement the recommendations. Next slide. We're looking at a a four-phase planning process that we are just at the beginning of in phase one. You'll see that the plan written tends to wrap up by March twenty twenty two. That is a hard and fast deadline because it's driven by RCO, the Recreation Conservation Office. That approves master plans in order to ensure that you are eligible for grant funding. So we are currently in the system assessment phase where we're looking at your existing assets. Including not only parks and facilities, but programs, maintenance and operations resources as well. To be able to summarize those to provide a foundation for phase two. Where we're conducting a lot of community outreach that I'll talk about here momentarily. Uh in order to really understand community needs as well as their vision for the future. That moves us into phase three, which is all about the the action plan. We build off of the vision, creating goals and objectives, and then more specific site and system wide recommendations that feed into your capital improvement plan. And then in phase four, pull it all together in terms of a a draft and final plan. What you'll see throughout four phases is that we will involve you, council. In order to ensure that we are always moving in the right direction through this planning process, and we're also involving residents throughout the process as well. Next slide. One of the things that we like to do is to make sure that we are creating plans that represent your community. So we talk about embracing the diversity of your community. And when we talk about diversity, it's important to recognize that that's not just reflecting. Uh people of all ages, different incomes, different race and ethnicities. Those underrepresented groups that we want to involve in the process. But it also reflects that you have a variety of stakeholders as well as park users across your system. So we're looking at the residents here in town, the visitors who come from elsewhere to use your parks and trails. We're looking at the different interest groups, whether it's outdoor recreation, kayaking, geocaching. Maybe arts and culture, sports and fitness, community events, you know, picnic pickpicking and social gathering. We want to make sure that we are looking at the broad spectrum of people with an interest in parks and recreation. So that this plan really represents those diverse needs of your community. Next slide. We also make sure through this planning process that we are creating support for the action plan that ties it all together. Really, the goal here again is not to have a plan, the goal is to implement the plan. So to do that, we want to make sure we are building support among partners, among city leaders, other stakeholders. So that you have the support you need and know where the consensus items are to be able to move different projects forward. Next slide. You know, it's really important to us that this plan reflects your community's needs. So we conduct a a robust outreach process that involves hearing from the diverse residents and stakeholders that we talked about here minutes ago. And we do that by using the combination of both virtual and in-person outreach techniques. Uh including things such as the wall graphic that you see there on the slide, that can be done in an in-person meeting or can be done virtually. We want to make sure that we're involving as many people as possible. We do that through things such as an online survey. But we also want to make sure we're involving those key stakeholders and groups who otherwise may not be involved in the planning process. And we do that through tools such as an ambassador toolkit and interviews to be able to, in a more focused way, reach the. Specific groups, we want to make sure that they are represented. Beyond that, there are activities to involve staff in a staff workshop, rec- recognizing that staff are often the. The experts of what's going on in the park system because they've been working and involved in it for years. And then besides checking in with you all in every phase of this planning process. We also would make sure that we are involving the community, not just in identifying their needs in phase two. But then later in phase three and again in phase four, in understanding their priorities and the implementation goals. To build that broad support moving forward. Next slide. One of the key areas where we'd like to start to make sure that we are not only hearing from everyone, but starting the planning process in the right direction. Is to meet with you all so that council has the opportunity to not only ask questions about the planning process. But then also to respond to some of the discussion questions that you see here. Uh in answering these questions such as about the big issues that are facing your city today. The role that parks and recreation can play in addressing those issues and in the future. And then the key priorities for this planning process, we make sure that as we move forward in the plan, that we are able to respond to. Uh council desires for this planning process. So with that, I'm gonna step back and turn it over to you all. Uh to see if you have any questions about the planning process and then would like to respond to these discussion questions.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. Give the council an opportunity if they have any questions or comments. Uh Councilmember Alvarado would be be answering those questions specifically today or you're just curious? If you would like.
Well, I'll I'll kick off with number one, you know, obviously the biggest issue and in my opinion facing Pasco is is our projected growth. You know, almost doubling what we were when uh even us youngsters, and and I'm just not talking just age wise, but. Recent uh elections within the past four years or less. Join council, we're almost doubling the population in the next twenty years. Um and and that obviously comes with land masses. Um so in addition to a lot of people coming, we're going to be expanding. We've got the UGA which has about thirty six hundred acres. Um so making sure that we utilize public recreation facilities or. Procure land for such facilities is gonna be critical because the last thing we want to do is. Not have adequate public spaces. Um I mean, we're talking about issues potentially of a water park, you know, that's that's obviously one of the one. The hot button issue. Um but just simple parks, you know, whether or not we're gonna incorporate them into um. Planning developments and subdivisions um so that everyone has, you know, fair access to those. Uh so to me, again, population growth, expansion and ensuring that we have adequate access and facilities. Is is kind of how I see number one rolling into a simple statement.
Yeah, thank you. Um I think for for me, uh as it pertains to our parks and our recreation. It's not just so much of having them yes or no. I I know that um you know, part of developer fees paid for park fees and. Um I think there's uh there's a difference between a good park and a okay park. And I I I I do feel like so some of our parks in Pasco are a lot of grass and a few trees. And that's we call that a park. Um and um you know, I guess for for some folks, that may be a good a good park, but. I I I I have seen some really well-designed parks, um you know, in the different places I've been. Uh in different cities I've been, and so what would make me uh you know, have my friends that are visiting me from Spokane. Uh you know, want want me to show go show off my parks in Pasco. Um you know, I I I I say that kind of. Um you know, knowing that they had, you know, Olmstead uh designed parks and you know, things of that nature. I'm I'm being facetious of it and. But I I think the um. It it I guess I guess what I what I what I would love to advocate for is perhaps not even so much of the size of parks, but perhaps uh. They're well-designed and that they are built for humans that will use them and um built by designers that understand how humans use spaces. Um and so I I think that that's a um I I think to Mr. Serrano's point, it really is the. Uh the quality of of our parks is is a big priority for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor Martinez, and thanks for the opportunity. This is um this is exciting stuff. I'm really glad we're moving forward in this. I think this is one. It's gonna be one of the things that's really sets us in in a in a spot where we can be thoughtful about the future instead of just reacting to it. So um I I fully agree with both my fellow council members' comments so far and and I'm I'm positive there's a there's a bazillion things we can talk about here, but. Um you know, one of the things that we're seeing um is we're seeing um aging parks and facilities on on the east side of our town. I mean, we're seeing parks that are we're running around in dust. Um so it might cause injuries to some people, um perhaps, uh while they're playing kickball or something. Um but there is um. There there's all sorts of facilities that are now starting to age where where we need to replace the facility, upgrade them. We have changing use patterns, I think, that are a big part of this, where what how a facility is being used today is very different than how it was being used. You know, twenty years ago or thirty years ago when some of these facilities um were being built. So I I think I think making sure that we understand that and that we can. Upgrade some of our existing parks and make them and and make them usable again is really important. But I'll just quickly list a couple of other things. Um no community center. We 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 have the Martin Luther King Center and that's. Um and again, that's an aging facility that really needs some work, but no other community center. We we need to re- we we need to resolve that. And then I very much agree with uh Mr. Alvarado's comments of of our parks are just not interesting. Uh my girl's favorite park is over in Richland. It's a Gothos Nature Preserve, um which is in this strangest little spot. Um and it's just a gorgeous, awesome park with hills and interesting play features. There's a little fossil dig. I mean, it's just simply their favorite, still to this day, their favorite park. Um and I don't have anywhere in Pasco to take them to that would even. And I don't have anywhere in Pasco to take them to that would even, even compare. They're just, they're just not interested in our parks. Um, they're okay. They're grass. Some slides, it's, it's okay. They, they, they'll, they'll play on those, but it's not the same love and iconic nature as some of the other parks have, so. A number of big issues I think we're facing on this area.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Maloney. Councilwoman Roach.
I, I would agree with Councilmember Serrano's, um, answer to number one, just the population growth, most definitely with that. You know, the traffic, automobile traffic. My, you know, my pet issue has been for so many years, just increasing the multimodal transportation opportunities in Pasco. Um, and I think that includes with our parks and our bike paths. And then I think, you know, our Parks and Rec just recently has done some, uh, really great work with community, especially in that Chapel Hill, Hill area, the park over there. And that this is an opportunity to engage with community and the neighborhood surrounding the parks, to ask what they want and how they would use it. Um, and so I, you know, I agree, some of our parks are kind of bland in that they're, they are just grass in a jungle gym. You know, but places like Chihuahua, Sacagawea, uh, they're great parks. They've got access to bike, uh, pa- bicycle pathways and the river and docks and, so I think we have some, some nice gems here. You know, one of the things that I think about is, you know, we want to have a water park here in the upcoming future, and I, I think about access to that and how much that might cost and what that setback might be in the future if Pasco residents do decide to vote on that. Would the cost of going to that water park be, um, a barrier for some people? And in the past, Pasco, in Pasco parks, we used to have community pools. And it's something that I think swimming, learning how to swim is a life skill. Um, and it's something that in an area like ours, you know, I'm on the Visit Tri-City Board, we get to boast something like two hundred and sixty days of sunshine a year, something stupid like that, but, um, we get to, we would make the most out of it in, in Pasco, um, to have that and to have that accessibility in, in neighborhoods. Um, and have a little barrier to entry to get, get there. And I know that, you know, Memorial Pool being closed last, last year because of COVID was a huge setback for our community and families and kids. And so it could be a, could be an opportunity that I, I would be excited about.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. And I would like to weigh in a little bit. And these are just my thoughts. You know, I remember when the community pool went down, it was just too expensive to have all these pools. And, and it's really interesting, because I've been through this process before, and it's like we shoot for the stars to see what we can get in the middle, right? One of the things I think is very, very critical is whatever we do have, we need to make it, we need to keep, uh, maintain it and keep it state-of-the-art. I was recently, uh, just last week in Newport, Oregon, in where I was with this marina. And it was just amazing to me, you know, the facilities around the marina were, looked pretty worn down. You're just like a typical uh, coastal facility that looks old, rundown. But the public restrooms in this little area were state-of-the-art restrooms. And it was amazing how many people were at these little stores just because of the restrooms. And I think that's very critical and something we really need to think about. And it made me think about our Wade Park. We have a, a very nice, uh, goat launch at Wade Park, beautiful grass area, nice by, by the river. And I, it really is underutilized because there's no restrooms there. So it would have been nice to have, you know, maybe plan ahead, have restrooms there. And not only restrooms, but state-of-the-art restrooms, because um, all these things we have to be, think about to maintain and keep them clean. The minute, the minute these buildings start deteriorating, it just seems like it gets worse and worse, uh, exponentially. So that would be, that would be my thought is, um, as well as, you know, doing the things, getting the right people to do the right studies to make sure that they're utilized correctly, state-of-the-art, that can have room for improvement, and keep them maintained. Um, and, and those are the kind of things that I think is gonna be important, so that what we do have, we have very nice. So that would be my thought.
And there's, there's one that I forgot to mention. Um, I, I think one of the things that I, um, have to do more with our land use is um, the placement of our parks in relation to how people access them. I think, um, you know, meantime, you know, you could live ne- really close to a park, but because the way cul-de-sacs are or things like that, you'd have to walk around, you know. And so I, as we're talking about connectivity, uh, a, um, issue that was brought up a, a few, um, about a month or two ago, I, I think that that would really add to our, uh, ability for people to access, um, our, our parks by, by foot, like kids riding their bikes home and things like that. And so I think looking at, at the larger context of where these parts are located and how they're accessed. So I guess I just wanted to add that to.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. So is that helpful?
That is very helpful. I really appreciate that we are looking both, uh, at, at the changing evolving needs, uh, new trends, as well as the fact that the existing park system needs to be taken up a notch to be more engaging, exciting, have those higher-quality parks that you mentioned in terms of design as well as programming. So I appreciate all of the comments, uh, you know, the emphasis on multimodal transportation, bike connectivity, access to the water, the indoor needs. There's just a, a lot for us to tackle here, so we're gonna do it from a, a data-driven perspective to bring you all the right information that you need to make some clear decisions on priorities. So thank you for the guidance today.
Well, thank you. And yeah, I know this is a very important process and looking forward to, uh, to, you know, completing this and see what, uh, the final product, product will be in March of two thousand twenty-two. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And Director Radke, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
So next, we're gonna go into a miscellaneous council discussion. And, um, I have multiple things I'd like to discuss tonight, but I wanna go ahead and give, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel opportunity.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few things tonight. Wanted to give you a quick update. As you know, we've, uh, been dealing with record-high temperatures across the region. And, uh, wanted to let you know that, uh, you know, staff's been working, uh, with many of our community partners to try to provide some relief to community members. Uh, I think you're probably aware, last week of the initiative on the water bottles and filling stations, and that, that work continues. Obviously, we're taking precautions with staff. Uh, you know, they're, they're greatest resource of the city and, and for them to pro- provide services, they need to maintain their readiness and health. And so, uh, we're trying to do what we can to assure that, uh, uh, we're taking all the precautions possible with them. We're in the process right now, uh, Chief Gear, in fact, has, uh, been coordinating with, uh, the mission on cooling stations, uh, cooling, a cooling station and use of, uh, the mission. We've found some capacity there for, to help it address some of the, the issues we're experiencing with their homeless population. And then also looking at, uh, Director, Director Radke is looking at, uh, we're talking First Street Center?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, First Ave Center. Uh, reopening that and providing that for some of our senior population and other community members. And, um, the other item I, I thought was interesting today that came up, uh, you know, you've probably heard some, you may have heard some on the news about rolling power outages, uh, and are able to confirm with Franklin County PUD that that's not anticipated in Franklin County. So, uh, our residents on this side of the river should be, uh, should be able to, those at least have air conditioning, which there's a lot of them, I understand, but, uh, should be pretty good and be able to rely on those, uh, either at home or hopefully one of the cooling stations. Uh, second item I wanted to talk about was, uh, some news of our, um, uh, current appointee to the mosquito control board. Mr. Hoffman has taken a different position on the mosquito control board. Uh, I think, I think it's a Franklin County position. And so he is, he is, um, vacated the city representation. Uh, I guess my first question to the council, I mean, typ- typically this, this very, um, exciting position's been held by a council member. Mr. Hoffman had left the council and the council at that time appointed him to continue on. Before we, um, went through a process of, of appointment of another Pasco resident, wanted to ask council if there was an interest among the council members themselves serving on this board. I think it's a daytime meeting around noon or so, once a month.
Well, those are pretty difficult for me.
Yeah.
But I think at this point, uh, unless anybody has an objection, we'd probably be worth it to, to find somebody that has the opportunity at, at that hour and
Okay.
and has an interest in this area as well.
So Mayor, I, I will talk to you, because the, the, uh, executive director of the mosquito control district, uh, has a person, uh, that, that looks like they have some pretty good background and a willingness to serve the rest of this term, which would be the end of the year. And then if that's something council's interested, I'll chat with you, Mayor, about it and have a letter of interest from him. And then secondly, uh, or la- last, last, uh, item I wanted to talk about is, uh, you know, we're in a lot different place than we were last year when it comes to Fourth of July. And, uh, with the exception of the parade, we're gonna have a pretty normal year. So, uh, wanted to note, uh, Third of July, we'll have the family bike ride, uh, that, that's both, uh, at Riverview Park. And then on the Fourth of July, the Camp Patriot Fun Run is back, the Kiwanis brunch and lunch are back. So all morning, uh, into the afternoon with that, the Show and Shine Car Show, the regatta is back, the cardboard regatta at, uh, the Memorial Pool, and the Sagebrush shoot, shootout out at the, the soccer tournament. Then of course, uh, the grand old Fourth of July fireworks, starting at approximately ten PM. So, uh, I think that's gonna be very exciting for the community. Uh, obviously, uh, we're, we're opening back up in terms of the statewide. And, um, I, I think we're gonna have a lot of folks, uh, very excited about the Fourth of July. I do have, uh, Chief, uh, Roski on the line. Chief's gonna talk a little bit about some of the efforts we're making already on, on outreach, uh, with respect to fireworks, particularly illegal fireworks. And, uh, and what, uh, what kind of staffing and enforcement will be in place, uh, through the holiday weekend. So, Chief?
Thanks, Dave. So, um, we, we'll gear up for the Fourth like we do every year. And as the state opens back up, uh, we'll have our resources, our officers, um, divided across the city to manage the, the different events, uh, the Geesa Stadium event, and then of course to handle the increased activity that we generally see and fireworks enforcement. Um, as Dave had mentioned, this is a abnormal year for us with the dry season. So the need for parents and adults to supervise fireworks use in the city is gonna be so important. We can't be everywhere, and so we need people to use legal fireworks so we can minimize any danger or hazard that might be out there and ensure that we have a, have a safe and sane, uh, Fourth of July. And I think the, the best thing is if people will buy their fireworks in Pasco, you can rest assured they're gonna be legal. Not only are you supporting local causes and charities, but you can rest assured that those stands are, are providing legal fireworks. And we will have officers out there, um, uh, making enforcement where, where we can't get, uh, get people to comply and buy their fireworks, uh, uh, from us here. So please, we ask you this year, we ask you every year, but certainly this year, because of the dry conditions that were coming out. The firefighters are gonna be stretched thin. Um, the police resources are gonna be stretched thin, so please use safe and sane fireworks. Thank you.
Yeah, and just wrap it up, uh, in talking to Chief Gear earlier today, a lot of fuel out there, very dry conditions. And with the high temperatures, our crews are gonna be extremely busy. We anticipate they'll be busy dealing with people that are in distress because of the high temperatures and high heat and activity. So, as, as Chief Roski mentions, ask people to keep that in mind as they're in their holiday celebration. That's all I had for this evening.
Thank you, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel. I would like to kind of piggyback a little bit on that. I, I don't know how I can express enough, uh, how, how these hot conditions are really affecting our elderly and, and in everyone. Uh, it's amazing to me how, how easily and how fast it can, it can get, it can catch up to you to get heat exhaustion. And you'd be surprised. I mean, we're talking headaches, we're talking vomiting, uh, you know, vomiting. Those things can sneak up on you very quickly. And I appreciate the, uh, Paradise Water Company for donating some water bottles uh, to, to, over here at Volunteer Park to, uh, to give to those who are in need. And for these cooling stations, please find cooling stations that you can go to to find some refuge. I, I know it's, it's something that's been told many, many times, but we're only on day four of like eleven of these days that we're gonna get. So we really need to emphasize and really take this seriously. Uh, as, right before I left my house, I was able to see there was a fire, uh, on Road fifty-four in Sylvester. They closed the road down. Just imagine what our firefighters are going through when they have to gear up in a hundred and twelve-degree weather. Uh, I actually went through the, um, fire, um, training, uh, that course that they provide, uh, once a year or they used to before the pandemic. It is incredible, and we just, we take for granted. And you could say that that's what we paying for, but that's, that this is above and beyond when you have in these kind of conditions. The linemen that are out there working on the, on the electrical lines, we need to think about those people. When you're setting off fireworks, you're not supposed to be setting off. And I want to urge and, and ask for all of our adult families, parents, please watch your children, your teenage kids who want to be funny, they just maybe have one or two illegal fireworks that are gonna, you know, cause problems and hurt somebody. Every year, I get bombarded and I get thrashed by illegal fireworks going on and, uh, and people's pets are affected. I understand it's part of the gig and it's gonna happen perhaps, but we just really want to emphasize, uh, like, uh, City Manager had just explained, we have a lot of dry fuel out there that's just, just waiting for something to ignite it. I just want to emphasize, please take care of yourself, your family, your pets, and everyone. Uh, this heat is, is more serious than, than we can imagine. The next thing I'd like to bring up, um, uh, you mentioned the Fourth of July, uh, really looking forward to the Fortuna, Fourth of July events this year, uh, since we didn't have any last year. And, uh, really looking forward to, to visiting with our community and being a part of that. And especially at the ten o'clock fireworks show at Geesa Stadium, uh, for all of our community members. Um, another announcement that I'd like to make is, um, I am gonna be absent on, uh, next week's meeting. I've asked Councilmember Serrano to lead the meeting. And, uh, and hopefully, uh, Mr. Milney and everybody else can attend so that we can have a quorum in the regular meeting we're gonna have next week. One more thing. Last but not least, I would like to just pay my respects and condolences to the Rick Turway family. Um, for those of you that don't know Rick, he was a director, uh, worked for the city of Pasco for several years. I, I don't know exactly how many. Uh, but, uh, Rick Turway was a wonderful person, and he did a lot for our community. And I just want to pay my condolences and, uh, and our prayers and thoughts are with the family, and just wanted to, to recognize him here tonight. You know, he, um, he had some complications, medical complications and, and, um, and passed away last week, if I'm, if I'm understanding it correctly. So with that, I just wanted to make sure I, I mentioned him. He was a very uh, integral part of our, of our staff, uh, when he worked for the city of Pasco. So I appreciate that very much. And condolences go out to the family. So with that, is there anybody else that would like to share? Uh, Councilmember Alvarado.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a, a little bit of an inquiry for, uh, uh, for council tonight. Uh, you know, as you know, I've been representing the city on the transit board. And there's a contentious issue that, um, I certainly did not want to, uh, go there with, uh, Ruben Alvarado, representing Ruben Alvarado. Uh, although I, I do have a, I've made my, my views on the issue of, um, you know, the county's brought forth, um, you know, proposal to, in effect, uh, move funding from transit to, uh, fundamental health operations of, uh, the, uh, uh, future building, which, you know, we, we all care about as well. And so I've made my thoughts pretty clear on that, but I did not want to go there, uh, just to represent myself. I didn't want to go as a representative of, of this body and of the city. Uh, and so I wanted to just bring that before you to see if you, uh, I don't know how, how to go about that to get, get some form of consensus, but um, just want to let you know that, um, uh, you know, uh, this may or may not come to, uh, the board, uh, likely would. And so I just want to be able to, to know that I'm representing the, the council. And so I'm not sure how to proceed with, uh, if there's any ideas on, on how I can get a little consensus or, uh, as far as, um, if the council feels, feels comfortable me moving forward with this, my, 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 uh, view or, um, I don't, I don't know.
And what views?
So I, I'm very opposed to, um, moving, uh, funding away from transit. Uh, I believe it really impact, it will long-term impact our city and our ability for, to have a decent multimodal, uh, transportation in our city. Um, I think we have a better way to fund, uh, mental health that I think we need to explore. Um I think we have a better way to fund uh mental health that I think we need to explore. Uh the county, I think, needs to explore, and then we as partners perhaps may have. Uh I think because it's very very political issue, I I wanted to make sure I'm I'm going with the full confidence of the of the uh council. Uh as a representative of the city of Pasco, so I I I don't know if this is unusual or to.
Well, I appreciate that very much, Councilmember Alvarez, cause it is important that we represent the council when we're out in the community, uh did you have something you wanted to share for? Oh, okay, so I guess uh I I didn't know if it was related to what uh Councilwoman Alvarez was saying, but. Um I'm I'm in favor of keeping, you know, the transit in multi-mo- uh modal um. Things for our community, especially since we're gonna grow, now it is, I I do consider the fact that, you know, eighty percent of the time that I see. You know, buses out there, they have one or two people in them, uh however. Um I know that they're being used utilized a lot more in different times of the year, maybe perhaps the season. Uh but I think it's something that's critical that we have to have in our city as we continue to grow and. And uh if we're gonna be a vibrant community that's gonna allow, you know, to give opportunity for those who are trying. To be protective members of society, we need to have um um mobile transit for them to utilize, so I I'm in favor of that, I don't know. Uh if anybody else has anything to to comment on that, Councilwoman Roach?
Yeah, my my comment would just be that I I'm disappointed that it's been painted as a mutually exclusive. This or that sort of situation where. Public transportation is extremely important and so is a rehab facility, um and so I don't think. My opinion as a council member is I would not take one money away funds from the public transportation to give to the other. I'd wanna figure out how to do both.
Alright, cut, alright, is that is that good enough for you, uh Alvarez, or did you?
I was gonna weigh in on this.
Okay, go ahead.
This this seems like one that we need to have, I think, clear. Clear communication on because it is so highly political, as Mr. Alvarez was saying, and I I agree very much with um what Council uh Member Roach was saying as well. Um and I would also propose that um the county currently has a very large amount of funds from ARPA. Um and that same the same federal funds could be used for building and operating a mental health facility through twenty-four. So while this is this is a very urgent issue, in fact, I'm I'm sorely disappointed that we're having this conversation so late in the game when the counties have. Both the authority and obligation to address mental health issues for such an extended period of time. Um creating this 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 false dichotomy is 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 unfortunate, but now that we have this opportunity for federal funding too, um. We I'm I'm positive, I I would certainly support some of cities' money being used for this, and if we were to come together as a whole tri-cities and both counties. Uh we could we could fund this this uh facility with the ARPA funding, federal, you know, put free federal money. We could build that facility, and then again, let us come up with a with a community-wide solution that doesn't harm some of our community to help. Well, some of the same community members that are using the transit facility, so I'm supportive, Mr. Alvarez.
Just wanted to open up the conversation, I appreciate it, um and if staff has any. Uh thoughts or anything in the future, I you know, I'd love to welcome that, if there's any information I could bring back from those meetings, I I'd love to do that in my reports.
Mayor Protem.
My quick comment was just in support of uh your thought, and I agree with what Councilwoman Roach and. Council uh Member Maloney have just stated, um there should be some different way. And we should explore that, but I'm in support of your idea, thank you.
Thank you, so with that, Mr. uh Councilmember Maloney, do you have something else?
Yes, thank you, um Mayor Martinez, um what I'd just like to bring up is, um it's been a little bit since we last talked about prioritizing um ARPA funds, and I would. I would just encourage staff again, we we have needs in the community, I think over the last few weeks, we heard very clearly from a segment of the community that this is. Something that's still strongly, very important to them, and so I'd I would like to, as soon as possible, um approve some. Amount of relief for our community and get some funds out there, even if it's temporary, even if it's not used up by, say, the end of the. Calendar year, rolled back into other priorities, I'd be I'd be very, very interested in moving forward. Um Mr. Zable, do you have any idea when we're gonna be able to see that next, cause I again, we're. We're we're talking July before our next business meeting, and that feels like we're becoming very laden by. Bureaucratic delays, and I hate being a bureaucrat, that's part of that system that we're kind of slowing things down when some of these things, I think, could be. Could move forward a little faster for relief.
Yeah, I think when when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, uh the idea was probably a phased allocation. And I and I think from staff's perspective, uh we felt that there was. Uh some consensus among the council on at least some level of funding for some very broad. You know, business assistance, those those type of things, uh and so our intent was to bring that back to you. Uh within the next week or two, and uh what we've been kind of been doing in the meantime. Uh aside from exploration on longer-term uses, is looking at relationships, uh you know, for a third-party uh. Uh five oh one C three type organization to help us distribute those funds, and so we've been having some discussions. With uh with a couple of different alternatives, I I was not a part of those last week. And have not had the opportunity to talk to Finance Director, but uh we should be probably be able to bring you something back by next week.
Would that, Mr. Zable, would that be in a form of a resolution we could vote on next week or for discussion?
I I'd probably, I I guess I would feel it'd be a little bit presumptuous on my part to bring a resolution to council on on specifics, but. Uh I I I think if there was an idea on the council uh for some specific assistance. Uh you could probably do that with a with a motion, you know, from the floor that night, I mean, it would be on the agenda, you'd be able to take action on it. So if you wanna make a specific allocation, we could do that.
I would certainly be interested in proposing something, I I feel like, again, we've we've had the money in the bank for for a month or more now, um. And we know some of the needs are out there that are very clearly within the scope, so I'd be very interested in moving forward, so um I could have further conversation, Mr. Zable with you to. Yeah, so that we can potentially move forward on something on um next business meeting, thank you.
Thank you, uh Councilmember Serrano.
The only comment I'd have for that is we know that two of our council members will be gone, um so if we could. Maybe David, you as the conduit, have them weigh in on something of that, if we're if we're if we're looking at moving something forward, I think it's. It's wise to have all seven of us um present in some way or another.
I'd certainly welcome any feedback from any council member, I'm I'm not trying to do this in isolation, I just. I I know that the community is being very frustrated about how slow we're moving on certain things, and this is an example of something that was fully within council's control to move forward quickly on. But I very much, very much appreciate any feedback from the community, thank you.
And and as well, I mean, unfortunately, we're not be able to be here, but if you have a majority, a majority rules, so. So we're we're good, uh but but I'll will have some communication uh with Dave, uh Mayor Protem and I to make sure that we're on board as well. Alright, with that, again, I just wanna let everyone know, have a great Fourth of July uh celebration. Let's be patriotic and uh and abide by the rules as as much as. We let's abide by the rules. And as much as we have to, but number one is please have fun, be safe, and have a wonderful Fourth of July, thank you very much, it is. Eight thirty-eight and this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.